Like to call a meeting to order of the uh, regular meeting of the Rutland Town Planning Commission. Uh, Thursday, October sixth. We'll call the meeting to order and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as well.
Thank you. Okay. I entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Motion approved. Thanks Jerry. And thank you. Um, Howard. Any discussion? additions, deletions, clarifications? If none, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Uh, seeing that there is no public present. Uh, there appears to be no public comment this evening. Okay, new business. Uh, next steps with the reformatted subdivision ordinance. And uh, under that, we have a cross-reference for sections on uh, storm, on the stormwater ordinance. That was something Barbara and I had discussed that because uh, there are references uh, in here that we should include those. I, were they already included, Bill? I can't remember on that. We, we just discussed it, right? So those will be included on a subsequent version um, as opposed to the one that we uh, published for you for tonight, the bill has made available for us. Uh, but we will uh, include the, those cross-references as we go through the uh, document. So I'd like to take a little bit of time. And I'd like to thank Bill publicly for his great work on compiling all of the input that we received uh, regarding the formatting and the grammar punctuation and other uh, formatting uh, components. And then we also had a discussion of things that we will need to look at uh, more specifically and uh, closely. So uh, I'll begin by just asking your thoughts about the formatting as you now see it and uh, how that appears in terms of readability, uh, just in case there are any, if there's any feedback for Bill uh, based on that. That's just a uh, review of uh, the layout. Any thoughts, comments, observations? Yes, Norman?
It's a significant improvement. And clears up some of the early just nits. Well, that have been there for years.
Well, I uh, I think Bill did a very good job of uh, looking at that and that this will serve as the template for all ordinances uh, for the town. And so it will be consistent in terms of table of contents and how you go through and find things. So hopefully people will find it to be uh, more user-friendly. Uh, we can certainly make any uh, adjustments later on as we go through this process because this is not going to be a one and done. Um, task. We do have to have discussions about several sections and I'll, I'll make a comment about that. Uh, the uh, highlights. Um, the green, uh, the yellow highlights are things that have uh, changed. Is that correct?
Uh, yellow with things that were added.
Added, okay. So they were not in the original document.
Right, so that applies things like select board where we took out Board of Selectmen.
Right.
So we made straight through Board of Selectmen and added select board. So yellow is typically new language.
Right. The, the blue are statutory references? Is that correct?
Yeah, the blue is things that we need validation on accuracy.
Okay, and those are mostly some type of statutory reference or state reg reference. Uh, and then the red uh, highlights, there are fewer of those, uh, but those are areas that we need to have discussions about. But Bill and I spent an hour and a half uh, going over the uh, various changes and uh, comments and recommendations about cross, cross-referencing things and making sure that everything that was in the original document I had a reference that was still valid. Um, and so the red areas are uh, areas that we saw some inconsistencies, if that's fair to say, Bill, or we've found um, reason to discuss whether they were antiquated and should be removed or whether they are uh, consistent with uh, current other current ordinances and whether we need to make cross-references there. So I think the first one appears on page six. Um, and that's in section two, application and approval procedures. Uh, two point zero one, uh, approval required and uh, the note there is we do not ask for a contract which is referenced in that paragraph. Correct? Um, the second page, oh, second page, excuse me, page seven, you just turn that page. There are a couple of red areas that we'll be looking at. Uh, and uh, for example, up under number two at the top. Uh, the sketch plan shall consist of two copies. Is that a change from the, what was listed as six or?
Well, the, this is what this says, the application.
Says six, okay. I knew that it went, went one way or the other. So um, our application, that's one of those inconsistencies. The application says that we need to have six and this is two.
Isn't that an easy one to fix? Shouldn't it just be six?
That's, we just need to have a conversation about that.
We can't, we, we can't like change this without going through the whole process. So yes, but this gives
It's, it's, it's not that easy.
Seven copies. There's seven.
Right, right.
You know, the old, we want seven copies, like that's, that's the opportunity there to do that.
Gotcha. So it, once again, it's one of those inconsistencies. We as a body have to take action on, on that. It's fairly simple. If we believe that six is the right number and that we because that's what we're currently using on the application. We just need to say, yes, we want to make this six. So a few of these things hopefully will check off tonight. I don't want to make this meeting particularly long, but one of those. If no one has any objection, we can make that done tonight. Yep. And so Bill can then just check that off and put the date on it and we can move forward. Um, you know, the second uh, area, time of submission, the final plat shall be submitted not more than six months following the determination of the planning commission relatively sketch plan. And we have a question about that. Time line. Um, next page, page eight, we have a couple on that page as well. So um, uh, findings of fact and conclusion, uh, Bill and I discussed, Norman, you might have picked up on that too. Uh, we don't do anything with findings of fact, at least we haven't in my time here at the on the planning commission. I don't know, Howard, if you or Jerry with longer tenure have issued something like that, but that is something that we'll also need to discuss. Because that currently isn't our practice. Uh, number five, conditions of changes. Um, and we've highlighted the amount of improvement uh, as something we also need to discuss. We flip, we uh, flipping by.
Whoa, I think it's the next page.
Yep. Uh, the blue at sixty feet on page eleven, Bill. Is that supposed to be blue or is that supposed to be red?
We might pointed that out as, as an odd divisible.
It just seemed, right, it was.
We want to verify that as the correct number.
Yeah, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna put that on, well, even though it is in blue, I would like us to uh, to look at that one.
Yeah, where is this?
It's uh, it's page eleven. Uh, it's under preliminary plat. It just seemed to me a strange. Yeah. And fifty would be easier. If you've got a hundred trying to do the um, math on sixty out of a hundred makes no sense if it seems to be an arbitrary figure. So I would my mathematical mind would say make it fifty and then you can scale it more easily. Uh,
So why don't we do that? Or do we, why we still need, we need everybody to make that decision or what?
Well, this
We need five?
Well, I think tonight probably more recommendations and then you know.
Then vote on it later.
Yeah.
How about we don't go back to that when we say fifty? That totally makes sense.
That's I'm happy to do that now.
You agree, Howard?
Bill, you okay?
Yeah.
Fifty makes total sense. Yeah.
Fifty feet, okay, uh, excuse me. Uh, yeah, fifty feet. All right. Uh, next one, as you said, Jerry, page twelve. Um, the uh, red is in location of all trees on the site. Uh, the reason that that's up for discussion is because we had decided at a previous planning commission hearing or meeting that we did not require people to put the trees on there. So once again, that's an incon-
It's just we wave that every time.
We wave it every time. So if it's not there, then it doesn't have to be waved and could be removed. Okay, so once again.
Yes.
Um, uh, reading back through, we've got page fifteen. Uh, once again, that's the same as the one on page uh, twelve. Uh, it's talking about trees. So same comment there.
Where's that fifteen?
Page fifteen, yep, top of the page. You with us, Lauren? Page fifteen?
Fifteen, page fifteen. Fifteen, that's where.
It just makes the same reference to the trees.
Mm-hmm.
So once again, if we're gonna take those references out, we just need to talk about that once and be consistent. Page sixteen, we have several uh, areas here. Um, we have uh, owner certification under four point zero one and one. Uh, we have energy conservation. Uh, Bill, I don't know with that one.
Or, or called that one out. That was one you called out.
Which was?
Number two, under four point oh one point two, you called that one out as the one to discuss.
Energy conservation.
Yep. Okay. Do you want to say a word or two about that?
Well, it just seems that we have the town plan uh, has a significant energy section on it that we all worked very hard. And um, uh, it seems to me that uh, it's consist, it would be consistent with our energy plan with the uh, state goals, et cetera, to um, consider it as a, as a standard. Um,
So are you recommending a cross-reference to that? Are you recommending taking this out or are you recommending something else?
Well, I think it ought to be stay in and there should be a, a cross-reference to it.
Okay. Well, we'll talk about that, but thank you. And the owner certification, is that one you flagged, Bill?
No.
Is that a Norman one too?
Yeah.
Somehow my numbering and this the numbering that I had from the first thing and what you put together, the pages are a little different now.
We're in section, section four.
Start of section four.
Okay.
We go to the beginning of section four.
Oh, I said, do we apply it? Was my question. Um, and you know, if if we, I think we should. I think it ought to be there. I think we ought to cross-reference it. Um,
The, the owner certification?
The energy conservation.
No, we just talked about that. We're talking about the owner certification.
In part one, Norm. You would, you would put something, you'd put owner certification in part one.
Part one.
Yeah, you're
It's right at the beginning of section four.
Right here. Thank you, okay.
You would put a note about owner certification.
I think that there ought to be some certification indicating that all this, all this is met.
Sorry.
By, by the owner when they filed the application.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So we'll, we'll uh, talk about that. Thank you. Um, the lot layout refers to zoning. I think that that was just something we missed. Bill, probably because I think that's a Norman.
I'm not, I'm not sure because we're moving requirements zoning regulations almost makes that entire
Paragraph.
Paragraph irrelevant.
Right.
So that may be, maybe removing the whole thing.
Oh, that may have been one of the ones that we talked about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause it, it says zoning and we don't have.
Right.
Right, and, and there's really no other way. There's really nothing other, other than zoning that would dictate a lot layout. So it makes the whole thing irrelevant.
That's right. You and I had talked about that. And, and prior to you and um, Howard coming in, we were just having a conversation uh, about the word zoning. And uh, we had that conversation last time. Um, when Bill and I did our edits and then we looked at Norman's edits. The, the question came up again and Bill and I talked at length about um, the problematic reference to zoning where we don't have any. And um, Norman and I both originally thought that, you know, having something in the referenced future zoning potentially would enable us to not have to go back and revisit that. But from Bill's perspective, it's problematic just the, by virtue of the reference because they're asking, do we have it? Do we not have it? Where do they find it?
I agree.
And so the, I, we finally settled on removing zoning from the whole document. And so the reason that this was here was because that's the only reference. And if that's not, if that's going to be removed, then there's actually no point for number four under uh, four point zero one.
So then that should be, the paragraph should be removed.
That's what we're thinking and that would be open for our discussion, right? Um, okay, uh, next page, page seventeen. Um, town highways. That's also for discussion to review or remove because uh, this is covered entirely in the streets and sidewalk ordinance.
This basically lays out how roads are supposed to be constructed, so it's just redundant.
Right.
And confusing maybe if it's, you know, looking at two different.
And, and the reason we brought that up is because if you look at part nine of that section, the very last sentence says in all instances, the town highway ordinance shall govern. So what's the point?
Right, right.
When you're a page and a half of stuff to tell you that regardless, something else, something else has authority.
Right, so we would simply cross-reference.
Right, right.
The um, the uh, streets and sidewalk ordinance.
It would just be like, they shall be constructed per the streets.
Right, that makes total sense.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Okay. So the next um, next thing is on page nineteen. Uh, access roads. Uh, under a, access management subsection A. It's talking about streets and driveways and it references the Rutland Municipal Development Plan. Bill and I think that that means it's the um, our municipal plan, our town plan, the Rutland Town Municipal Plan. But we weren't confident of that. If we believe that that's the case, we'll research that. And then uh, this body should take action on changing that reference if that's appropriate. Okay? All right.
I just had one other question.
That's on page nineteen. Yes, Norman.
Yeah, my, and you may have said this because I was preoccupied. Um, my question was, is it different than the town, the municipal? I don't think we have a municipal development plan.
We, we don't know. I, 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 I don't, is that, is that town plan?
Yeah, that's, that's my question. Is that the town plan?
That's what this question is.
Yeah.
So your question is the same as what Bill and I have.
But again, it talks about construction and performance of roadway policies. So right, even then, is that even a relevant paragraph?
Right, that goes back to the same thing we just talked about.
The roadway policies is a separate ordinance, basically.
Well, that's, that's streets and sidewalks.
Mm-hmm.
And in nineteen ninety-nine, we probably didn't have the streets and sidewalks ordinance.
Different.
Yep.
Yeah.
So this will require a little bit of extra work and then we'll bring that back and at a future meeting we'll talk about what we find. Uh, the water, once again, page twenty. You've got um, uh, that's open for discussion because uh, the water section is really covered as is um, uh, sewage disposal. They're covered by uh, contracts that we have with Rutland City where it applies.
And it's the only municipal water.
And that's the only municipal water.
State too, they have to get approval through.
Right. It's either state or it's, or it's Rutland City. So
In either case, it's not us.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. There's a, you know, some state subdivision regulations commence to play.
Right, so we might have to reference either the city contract or the state.
Because they're gonna get whatever they got. They're gonna put a well in, they've got to get a state.
Perfect.
State has to
Right.
authorize it and same thing with shore.
And the same thing on, on sewage. If you have, if you're not going with um, public sewer, you have to have a separate system. It has to be a state approval.
Yeah.
So um, once again, uh, that, that's the same as uh, four, uh, four point oh eight on twenty-one is the same uh, as four point oh seven. Uh, when you flip the page onto twenty-two, we've got a couple of things there. We have stormwater drainage. Uh, we're wondering if that is just a reference to the MS four stormwater ordinance. Okay, so that's also for discussion, in which case that would be cross-referenced. Uh, and this paragraph would be irrelevant. Correct, Bill?
It would be, yes. So it may just be cleaned up by referencing the other, the ordinance, yeah.
Right. Uh, same thing down. Uh, actually not the same thing, sorry. Uh, discussion down under four point one one, four point eleven, um, schools. And um, um, and the uh, the question here uh, and we probably should highlight it if you want to mark it. It's where a subdivision, it's in the first paragraph. Will accommodate a total of more than a hundred dwellings. The commission may require the designation of necessary public school sites or payment in lieu thereof. So uh, we found that particularly problematic because if somebody puts in a uh, development and there are more than a hundred units. Then uh, that would require a possible uh, payment either for constructing a school or for um, uh, for making uh, an addition to our existing Rutland Town School. We, we tried to find out and Howard, you might know this, Jerry, you might know it as well. Um, the year of construction of the Rutland Town School because we think that this occurred, if this occurred in eighty-one, it was either at or around the time that the school was built.
Built in the sixties?
Late sixties.
Built in the sixties, late sixties.
So then we don't really know why they would have had this in eighty-one for building a school when us, we had.
Paragraph.
It is a pretty serious paragraph. So must, something must have come up politically.
Yeah.
Jerry?
Well, I'm just, I just think it might, it might have had to do with, so in the sixties, the school was built, but then subdivisions like the one that I lived in had, you know, sixty-some houses. Maybe they were that was in the seventies through the seventies.
Yeah, and they put an addition on the school too.
Right, and then they put addition. Addition was later.
It, it could be the addition, the time of the addition. Yeah. There've been several additions to the school.
Yeah. And one big one though.
One big one, one, one major, yeah. And um,
That's the whole part where they had the cafeteria and the uh, gym and the music room, right?
Mm-hmm.
And then that dedication happened early in the nineties. If I remember correctly.
Yeah. That, that gymnasium was there. I, I worked a lot there in the late eighties, early nineties and it was already there.
Right, that's what I'm saying. But there was a dedic, was there a dedication?
Not sure.
In the nineties to Stacey, was it Stacey Chapman or somebody else?
I think it's John Floyd.
John Floyd. That's right.
Just happened subsequent to that.
I think, yeah. But I know there was a lot of discussion in the early nineties about not finishing the second floor. Right, no, I know. For what that's worth. So uh, we need to have some discussion about the uh, implications of uh, that paragraph. And whether that is something that we want to keep in there. Anyway. Uh, I think that's it, but oh.
Page twenty-four.
No, page twenty-four. Um, manage, management organization. Someone have to operate and maintain the facilities. So that's just a question of whether that's do we want that purpose and what? And do we want to keep it?
I think we need to find out if we can uh, what the purpose of this was. Um, uh, there might have been a fear of too much development too fast to keep up with.
Yep.
Um, is what, the only thing I could figure out. And what is meant by a management organization? Not even sure. Um, and again, I, I just sensed that some of this was taken from a a model ordinance given to us by the League of Cities and Towns or
Could have been.
Somebody like that and
I think this predates the League of Cities and Towns.
Doesn't.
Yeah.
The original document was eighty-one, I think, right?
I, I, but I, I agree. I, I think it was, a- as most of our ordinances are taken from another document and, and reworded and that's why there's zoning in here when
Oh, yeah.
Never could have been in the first place, so.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly what struck me when I kept seeing it.
So um, what I would uh, like to do is if there are simple things that Bill can change uh, and we don't have to have a substantive discussion. And let's see if we can go through those right now. So some of those red ones. So we'll start. Um, we're gonna skip um, page six because that's really uh, a discussion. Uh, and we'll go to page seven. And on page seven, we have the question of two copies, but we're currently requesting six on the application. Is that one that we, we believe, the commission believes needs to be updated here? And that we want to change that to six and make that recommendation? You could still keep it in red, Bill, for the entire planning commission.
Right.
Uh, but or some other color.
Nine members. I mean, you have, you know, I think, I think seven, you know, six. I don't know why, I don't know why those were decided on, but you know, there's seven regular members and two alternate. So it's like
Probably seven.
You need to ten, I, I don't know, like, well.
And that's, that requires like uh, the plats? Or a
Sketch, that's
Or the sketch, the sketch, yeah.
Their first draft, yeah.
Or sketch hearing.
The seven regular members, why don't we go with seven? I mean, that's
Because we just look at them and then that way I mean, unless you to your point, you want there to be ten so that everybody, I mean, it can be a digital copy too, right? Because you want physical copies and digital.
That's the other thing. It's like that, it, should that be a, a part of, that, that may be appropriate now to put that as part of this final submission is that we get a digital copy of that.
Right.
That's yeah.
So do we want to recommend seven physical copies?
I think seven makes sense. We're gonna look at them together anyway.
Right, and somebody who's online would have to have a digital copy, I guess.
So if, if, so what I, I would actually maybe suggest even here, it's like se- seven physical copies plus a PDF.
Right. On, on their sketch plan.
Yeah.
Yep.
Makes sense.
Seven.
We're just gonna kind of uh, move forward and have any further discussion with everybody. Correct?
Right.
I will, I will add a new I will, I will add a new color.
Yeah.
For next time.
Yeah, may, maybe make it orange or something.
Green.
Or green, whatever.
Different than what we have right now, it's like, this is what we discussed, and the changes that are.
Yeah, right. Okay, so um. I, I don't know if we want to undertake the six month thing. Uh, but that may be a simple, if it's not going to be a simple uh discussion, then let's table that until we have. Uh, more members present, that's on page seven, two point zero five. Thoughts?
We've gone with that for a long time, I guess, ninety days, basically.
Ninety days, that's not six months, right?
Right, yes. Um, yeah.
That's what the practice is.
Say the, the application to approval says ninety days.
And I think we ought to make it consistent and have some further discussion, but I mean, I think that's a good recommendation, when you ninety, if this is it on.
Yep.
If it's approved, why, why should it take any longer than?
Right.
That's like a long time, yeah.
You know, particularly since the application source that.
Right, so we'll, we'll do that. Okay?
Consent this. Ninety days.
Ninety days, yep, thanks. Um. Uh, findings of fact and uh conclusions on page eight, I think we're gonna leave that. Uh, for um, for the discussion. Uh, because I think that it would be premature for us, because we aren't doing it, but I think that if we're are doing due diligence, we should hear from everybody, so we'll hang on to that one. Uh, along with the uh, the amount of improvement, that would be the same. Um, so let's move to page eleven. Uh, we've actually made that change already fifty feet. So that's all set.
Which, where's that?
Page eleven, it's actually blue. Uh, it, it says sixty feet, but we're gonna have Bill make that fifty feet. And he'll put it in the same color as the other changes that we're going, that we're discussing on it now. Um, page twelve. Um, location of the trees on the site, that is inconsistent with what we're. Uh, we're currently doing, we waive that every single time, and we've told people they don't have to put it on the plat. So I think that this uh body can make a recommendation. Um, so what is your pleasure?
Yeah, I wouldn't recommend removing that kind of thing.
You would recommend.
Is there any, is there any time, Howard, we've ever asked for, or should it be left?
Not unless it was an annual, some special. Something different, I guess, that will require, murder everything is, but you know, we. Uh, even the outlines of the, of the tree lines. We're, we're talking about a survey plat, a survey plat that shows the meets and bounds and, and all the, you know, the roads and things like that. Do we really need? To know where the trees or where the, where the outlines of the trees are and things like that.
And every single time somebody comes in, at least for the whatever years I've been here, fifteen or whatever, the, the surveyor comes in and says, do we really now, every time, every, everyone, everybody, everybody says no. I mean, it, it just seems ridiculous every time we do it that they even begin to include those. As long as things like the, what we, and they're still on there, like uh, existing wells and things like that, I mean, the trees don't really.
Right, yep, yep. I, I won't feel we don't need that information, you know, you know, if we need it for, well, I guess if it's not here, we can't require it.
Right, but, so Bill, if you'd put that in green and saying that we're recommending to remove.
Yep. See what's everybody thinks, and that'd be the same on page fifteen?
Yes. So we could skip to page sixteen. Um, those are gonna be discussion questions. Um, so we're gonna hang on to those, we won't.
On page sixteen?
On page sixteen, yep, that's a longer discussion.
Yeah, I definitely think it is.
So um, we won't do that, uh, same on page seventeen.
But number four, we're gonna eliminate number four on page sixteen, a lot. Um.
Well, we think that that might be, we might be able to remove that, but, huh?
Yeah.
Right, but, so the question is, do, do we want to have that discussion since it's on the same page related to the other things? With the whole group, or do we want to just recommend removing that?
Well. I have a question.
Go ahead, Norman.
Um, the first sentence. I can see removing, uh, because it refers to zoning. Um, if we look at the second sentence. And the third sentence, I think we ought to look at that with. Uh, to see whether it has any pertinence, it may have. Lots of extra width to permit setbacks on each street.
But we don't have setbacks.
Yeah.
Okay, and consideration in lot layout shall be given to topographical and soil conditions, I don't think we do that, do we?
Alright, so we're, we're recommending removal, so you'll put it in green, you'll strike it out, and we'll give everybody an opportunity to discuss that.
Except we do, don't we, don't we require a lot uh, grade lines? Every five.
Yeah, those.
And even, and that's very common for us to waive that too, I mean, it's, it's on there, but it's very common to waive.
This isn't talking about, this isn't talking about requiring topographical line.
Right.
This is talking about laying out your lot, giving, giving topographical consideration, has nothing to do with lines on the map.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, page seventeen. Uh, is. Uh, for discussion.
But it, that's pretty likely that would be scratched, wouldn't it, if it's already there?
Uh. That is true.
If it's, why be redundant, it would just have a, would just have a heading and say it would.
Okay.
Curse, right, to the.
So you want to make a reference, do you want to make?
I would think.
It would be basically eliminating paragraphs one through eight.
Yeah, and then, and then you refer, well, you refer to the highway, yeah, exactly, leave nine, basically. Am I?
Number one, that's it.
I don't want to step, is everybody else feel that way, I mean, it's only logical, I think.
Great.
I like, I like this, I like the reference.
Yeah.
Waywardness.
I think there's a couple more coming up like that.
There's no question whether it's consistent with this or not.
Right.
I mean, we haven't had that problem, but. Think we're avoiding something, I could have created.
Um, so we still need an answer about whether that ref- re- references the town plan on page nineteen. Right? So we'll leave that. For discussion. Okay, then let's go to twenty. Uh, once again, to Jerry's point, maybe we want to recommend cross-referencing that and.
Discussing.
And discussing, yep.
That makes sense.
Right.
Water, sewer, and.
Those will all be cross-referenced, so you can highlight those in green then, Bill?
Water, the water section and the sewer section.
Yep, water and sewer, yep.
So when, when I look up Rutland Municipal Development Plan, I get Planning and Development for the City of Rutland, the City of Rutland Master Plan, and the Town of Rutland Municipal Plan. That's what comes up, there's nothing else that's. So.
You're just doing a Google search.
Yeah.
And that, does that hold true for that, for also for the stormwater, because.
Yes.
Those are the stormwater.
Yep. And that's on page um, twenty four?
Twenty two.
Okay. Yep. And we'll leave uh four point one one for discussion, that's on page twenty two as well, but. Um. So that would be the recommend, recommend removing, recommend cross-referencing and removing. For uh, four point zero nine.
Yeah, there's a lot to that, I just was reading part of that, and it says it can't. Yeah, suitable location within the proposed sub, uh, there's just, I, I'm sorry, I, I kind of lost my spot, but there's something in here, we're. Gonna have to be a little bit more, I agree.
O- o- on the school.
Yeah, yeah.
Location within the proposed subdivision, I mean, this is.
Yeah.
Is there even property big enough in the town?
Exactly.
Do this anymore?
Exactly.
Right.
Yeah, I've just seen.
Well, I think there are. Um.
For a hundred building sites, plus a school?
I don't know about plus a school, but for a hundred.
Well, that's what this is saying.
If there's a hundred sites, they gotta have room for a school, that's there. And if there isn't one, then that, that's when they gotta write a check to the town, so we can go build an addition on our school, like that's.
That needs some discussion.
That's a big, yeah, so yeah, absolutely, absolutely could be.
Okay.
I think the addendum is related back to this, to the town highway. Section. Not mistaken, so if we take that out. Addendum actually, I think goes away.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
That road.
That, that addendum might actually just end up going away, yeah.
That's on page twenty five.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the last page, yeah, so that would actually end up going away, if that, if that section goes, so does, so does that, so that makes the.
That management organization, I don't know how that all, where that all falls in, but.
Right, so we'll have a conversation about that.
Yeah, like the one up on Killington Avenue, there, there's common land there, that's, I think, I'm pretty sure that's owned by. Owned by the, so the, it's, it's, there's gonna be some things we can reference, this happened previous.
Think you hit my point, there are several condo developments in town where there is common land and there isn't.
Right, so there's got to be some precedent set there that we can discuss.
And a development like that, it goes through act two fifty.
Right, and then, and then act two fifty sets all that up anyway, that's all gonna be stuff that's approved by them and like a uh, owners association.
Right.
If there's gonna be a hundred lot subdivision, it's gonna be act two fifty.
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot.
This wasn't talking about a hundred lot subdivision, this is talking about a hundred. On a particular parcel or on a particular set of parcels, a hundred units.
Yeah.
A hundred.
Which would still be act two fifty.
Which still.
Well, it, it may, it may be, it just isn't necessarily a hundred, right, lots.
Yeah.
But then Norm brings up a great point, if, if it is a hundred, and this goes back to the school thing, we'll have to discuss it, because if it was, there was a hundred, act two fifty would dictate what has to happen anyway, wouldn't it?
But keep in mind, so like, there was that housing project that was, they were discussing on the.
Down south side of town, yep.
That would have been more than a hundred units, but it would not have been subject to this because it wasn't a subdivision, they were just buying the partials, so this, this never would have even kicked in for that.
Right, gotcha. And that could have very much so affected the school.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
But because they weren't doing a subdivision, there's no way for this to actually apply to that.
But they still would have to follow act two fifty, right, which.
Right.
There is some reference to a sale. That conditioned subdivisions, I saw that somewhere, is it in this document or someplace else?
There's, there's a box about a contract in there.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, there's, there, there are some odd references that.
Right, we would have to go back and uh, examine, because you're right, technically, right now, if there's not a subdivision, but if this is referencing that a sale and. Uh. Plan for uh, X number of units. Then it might condition the ordinance. So I, we just have to tidy that up a little bit, to make sure that that's clear.
That's great, oh, and I did add the.
Or create a different ordinance and cross-reference it.
I did add the right-of-way definition, do you like?
Yeah, I did, yep.
Okay, and then we, we do have to define previous subdivision, like, that's, we gotta come up with what that, we want that to mean, so.
Is that in red?
No, actually, it's not.
Why don't you put it in red and we'll, we'll discuss that?
Wherever it is.
Um.
Page five.
And uh, what I told Bill was that uh, there are several references to a um, right-of-way. But there is no actual definition of right-of-way, so uh, Bill and I discussed how that would uh, be um, could be added.
You know, i- if anything goes to act two fifty, the town is gonna be party, party to it. So that, that's where the town should take action, do, do whatever.
Dana, the part about the sale is on page six, under approval required. First, first amendment.
Whenever any subdivision of land is proposed, before any contract is made with the sale. Any permit for the erection of the structure. The owner of their authorized agency shall.
I don't think we have jurisdiction to reg- regulate things that occur before something gets to us.
Right.
And a contract of sale, I, I don't think. That, that makes me uncomfortable.
You mean, the language in here makes you uncomfortable?
When any subdivision of land is proposed before any contract of sale is made for the sale of any part thereof. I just think we need to think about it, we didn't take up time tonight.
Right.
But. I don't think we can regulate anything. Um. It says before any contract is made.
Right. It needs to be, it needs, this needs to be examined in the context of four point one one.
What page?
Uh, twenty two, it's the school one. I just think that we need to be clear about what's. Uh, taking precedence.
Um, the other thing I thought of is, you know, due to these other ones, there's enforcement sections in there.
Yep.
This has an enforcement section, but it says in accordance with state statute, it doesn't actually ever say what.
Are you talking about uh, four point one one schools?
No, actually, it's one point oh nine. Oh, and it's actually this, this ordinance, a bit of change.
One point oh nines.
On page three.
Oh.
It talks about, there's two reports with, in accordance with state statute, should, should we maybe? Specify that rather than referencing it? I don't know.
It, it might be, so you're talking about the blue forty, forty-four, forty-four?
Yeah.
Forty-four, forty-four.
We should verify that, but also, what is it, like, I, I actually don't even know what the enforcement is for this.
Right, and you're saying that this chapter should be this ordinance?
Couple of those that are chapters need to go to ordinance.
Right, and this, the one above it too.
Yeah, there's a couple above it, there's a couple below it, yeah, there's like four on the stage, so.
Right, well, anyway, those are, those are cosmetic things that we need to, because as we've changed, the um, it's no longer a chapter. It's the entire ordinance, so. Okay.
I think on section one point oh six, while we're there, I think you have, she put the title, or I think it's title twenty four. But you ought to check that, because it doesn't make, it's not helpful.
I think, if you look at one, like, if you look at some, yeah, well, if you go to one point oh one, the very fir- the very first thing. It says act twenty four, so I think that's why it's not listed afterwards, is because it's listed ver- it's listed first.
Okay.
So. Twenty four VSA chap.
Yeah, so, I think that would make the assumption that.
That's okay.
You're, you're going off of that, so.
Yeah, that's a correct, then it's correct, yeah.
And once again, that's something that we can do down the road as people uh, become more familiar with the. The revised ordinance and they want more, a more specific reference. To statutory provisions or the statements of statute, then we can certainly improve this. Okay, so uh, thank you for your participation, we have really gone through all of the changes that we need to discuss, Bill has. Some direction uh, through which to be able to make some changes to the next document that we'll, we'll get. And uh. We'll take this up at the next meeting, so this is something that we'll discuss for uh, twenty to thirty minutes at each. Uh, of our planning commission meetings for the next few, and if we need to table something for a time, because there are more pressing matters, we'll now let Barbara coordinate with Bill on that. Okay? Any other questions, comments, or observations before we move on? Okay. So hearing none, let's go on to old business, update on the energy survey progress, Bill, do you have um?
Haven't heard, I don't, I don't have access to the survey, so I don't.
Okay, so no update at this time? Who does have access to the survey?
Barbara.
Okay. So we might want to have her, if she's back at the next meeting at the end of the month, she can give us an update on that. Um. Yep, and in your um, materials packet, you should have received a letter man- um, from the manager of the Holly Lane subdivision. Which provides us with an overview of uh, their progress and where they're at. Um, and.
Sounds are waiting for permits, huh?
They're waiting for a lot of. They're waiting for a lot of, yep.
So, but but interestingly enough, like, reading through some of this. All the changes we're making don't apply to them. Because they've started, they've already started that process, so. You know, I mean, I'll I'll have, I'll, you know, have that that copy that we have right now, that's still, that's. Current as of today. But. There's some of the things included in here that. Are interesting to to that project, so. We just gotta make sure we're. They they do know, actually, I did make sure to point out to them. Um, and they did acknowledge it, that their roads. Starting to their intention to turn it over to the town. Must be constructed to town standards.
Right.
So they they did, they they did acknowledge that that is a requirement, they're going to do that, so.
Because currently, they're planning to keep it private, is that right?
Yep, as we have no intention, but doesn't, the intent doesn't matter, it still has to go to our, to.
Right, because if down in the future, down the road, they. There is a desire to do that, then it has to meet the specifications.
The bus is slow.
Up to a fire truck.
About the slope of that hill, is it, is it? Really steep?
The slope is, I think the slope is in the standards too. The V-tran, the the our, basically, our our road standard, roads and driveway standards are V-tran standards. So there there's, there are. You know, and that that ordinance, this. That covers that part of it. Is we're gonna start talking about that one tomorrow morning, so.
I don't think, Howard, that's too steep down in there, though, is it?
I I don't know, I.
I don't, I don't think it is. I mean, maybe, you know, I don't think it is, I don't think it'll matter, but.
It's not like Amanda place.
No.
Yeah, well, that's that's what I was gonna say, like, that one, that one comes up when I get talked about slope, it's 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 way too deep.
Yeah, that one's out of control.
Okay, so do people have questions on our correspondence, they talked about scheduling? And making sure that they have all of the permits in place before they come back for another hearing before this. And they have a couple of uh permits that are currently under review after. Comments, thoughts, observations, questions?
They've been pretty good about. Letting us know what they're doing, so.
Yep, that's great. Okay. That takes us to approval of the minutes, do I have a motion to accept the minutes? From. September tw- fifteenth.
So moved.
Thank you, Norman.
Second.
Thanks, Jerry. Any discussion?
How come we always look at Norm every time we discuss this? Everybody looks at Norm. Geez, Bill, that's awesome.
With envy or with?
Well, that could be, it could be.
I just read these over quickly. I've forgotten that I hadn't done it, so. At this point, I have no comments.
Okay. So uh motion to the, uh motion, there's a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
So moved.
You've already done that, or? So uh any further discussion before we vote? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Norman, you voting?
Yes, I said, I raised my hand.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, I had my head down. Alright, motion passes. Thank you. Alright. If there are no other announcements, Bill, any other announcements that you can think of? Uh anybody else have an announcement?
Oh, actually, I do.
You do?
Board is receiving their first. Blank budget sheets for discussion at their meeting next week, because we are. About. Two meetings. Two meetings away from getting into some more budget discussion, so.